It's now time to call the DeSoto County School Board meeting into a, what is it called?
Special call.
Special call meeting. Let's all stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your recommendations, sir, to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make it.
Do I have a second?
A second only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say likewise. I have it. The motion passed.
Madam President, I wanted to let everyone know that Ms. Henley has joined us.
Okay. Good morning. Good morning, Ms. Henley.
Good morning.
The new business, uh, who's going to get, are you going to, you know, okay.
Ms. Graves.
Employment resolution to retain legal counsel and municipal advisor, Ms. Graves, please, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This employment resolution is just to renew our contract with Young Law Group and Mini Group, who serve as our legal counsel and our municipal advisor when we issue debt. So it's just a renewal of what we have. It's just time to renew it. It happened to coincide with this. So we take care of that first and then proceed with the second.
Okay. The recommendations, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the employment resolution to retain legal counsel and municipal advisor.
I have the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say likewise. I have it. The motion passed. Resolution authorizing an interest rate law for trust certificates, Ms. Graves.
So we've been working over the last several months to issue the sixty-five-plus million in order to be able to construct the new Hernando High School, which will open again, I think, next week or four. So this is Warren Greenlee with Young Law Group and Mini Group, and Warren and I have been working very closely together recently. And he's going to kind of explain that this is the next step in the process for that. And he will be much better explain that than I will.
Thank you. So, um, so Cruz and Associates serves as your placement agent on this. And so they're the, they're the broker dealer. They're responsible for going out and finding a lender or purchaser for the trust certificates. And so they marketed the deal to a bunch of banks. And the best proposal or the lowest rate came from JP Morgan. JP Morgan was significantly lower than the other banks. They were around a three-sixty-five at the time. This is around eleven-and-a-half-year term on the lease. They were around three-sixty-five. The next lowest bank, I believe, was like a four-twenty-seven, if I'm not mistaken. There was a big gap between first and second. And Greg's on the air.
Yes.
So correct me if I mess up, Greg. Um, so there's a, a big difference, especially when you're talking about sixty-five million dollars, the amount of interest between those two interest rates is significant. So, um, so we then began sort of negotiations with JP Morgan. They sent copies of their documents to lock in the interest rates, term sheets, that sort of thing. And the, the term sheets, or the provisions rather, that, that they included in their agreement were way more detailed and in their favor than we typically see from a bank. You know, one of the, the big, and, and some of those we worked out over the last week. Things such as indemnification, waiver of jury trials, things that we can't legally agree to. They've agreed to strike those from the agreements. But there's still some things that are, um, some sticking points that are yet to be resolved. And then there's other parts that are more of a business decision for the district. So the way JP Morgan's offer works is it's a, their rate changes daily. The three-sixty-five was based on interest rates as of, I believe it was October seventeen, October seventeenth and nineteenth. But those rates update daily, and you're not locked in until you sign an agreement with them, locking in that interest rate. The caveat on that, the other side is that as part of locking in the rate with them, they also have a provision in there that's called a breakage fee. That if you don't close on the deal within the window allowed, then you owe them the breakage fee. If there is a breakage fee. The breakage fee is calculated based on the rates as of the lock-in date and the rates as of whenever the closing date is or whenever you break the deal. And the difference in interest rate is what you could owe them as a breakage fee. Initially, it was pretty vague on how they calculated the breakage fee. They got a little more specific, and they even sent us examples on that. The breakage fee, for example, for a twenty-five basis point movement for a two-five percent increase, I believe it was around eight-hundred thousand dollars. You know, so fifty basis point movement would be one-point-six million dollars. And that's payable within five days of the breakage.
Excuse me. What, explain to me, and maybe the other board members, the breakage fee. Are you talking about if we broke the?
It's if the deal does not close for any reason, um, other than them deciding not to fund the deal.
Okay.
The bank, not just.
Okay.
It's a penalty for not closing the transaction.
What would cause us not?
Yeah.
The, the biggest thing, I guess, we would see typically is the validation. You know, we, once the board approves an authorizing resolution and approves the form of documents, we submit that to the state bond attorney. The state bond attorney gives his opinion that the bonds or the trust certificates are valid. We then file that in the local chancery court. We then have to run a notice to taxpayers. That has to run for five business days, and you have basically a deadline for objections to be filed. That's about a three-week process for, for any taxpayer, any voter to file an objection. It has to be a legal objection, and it can't just be that they don't like the idea of a high school or don't like how much we're borrowing. It has to be that we haven't followed the law. If that happens, you then have to set a hearing date, at least ten business days after that. The amount of time that that takes could push us over the, the breakage time if an objection is filed.
And we would be responsible for, the district would be responsible for paying the breakage fee. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Even though we have done everything we're supposed to do?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't have to be fault of the district.
That don't sound very good to me.
So it's, it's a risk. Uh, it's a relatively low risk. It's a big amount. I guess the, the, the less risk is low, but if it happens, it's a big number. The other side of that, because we've, you know.
Well, let me ask you this. I'm sorry, but I'm dumb, I guess, but if we decide, no matter, say we had everything ready, and then we did not come up, the date had already passed, that we were supposed to make the deal, set the deal, then we would still have to pay the brokerage fee?
Under the terms of the agreement, yes. Now JP Morgan has said, and I tend to believe that if we're simply delayed by a week or two, they would work with us. You know, they're in the business to make money. They don't want to just ding you, put a bad taste in, in borrowers' mouths in Mississippi. This is one of their first big deals in Mississippi to do. You know, I, I've talked to their attorney. Their attorney said, in my experience, if it's simply delaying closing versus we're not going to close at all, they would work with you to adjust the interest rate or something besides just making you pay that upfront breakage fee. But in the documents, technically, yes.
Okay.
They could say you have to pay us eight-hundred thousand or however much. You know, it could be if interest rates go down between now and then, there's no breakage fee.
Let me ask this question. How much do you think that the district will save over time with the difference in this interest rate that JP Morgan's offering as opposed to what the next lows?
Greg, that number is big.
Yeah, it is big. Uh, and so we're looking at seventy-five basis points, uh, right type. You know, government of the first, it possibly another seventy-five basis points on December the first. We just look at about a hundred and twenty-five basis points. That's five-point-two million dollars over eleven-and-a-half years. So we feel like JP, in essence, is discussing with them over the last few months. They want to break into the Mississippi market. I think Warren is on point. He says that if it's a delay, they won't work with us. It'd be hard pressed for them to not work with us when that's not getting in this market, especially with the issuer, uh, is big and is solid, is the same here.
Well, I understand the concerns the board has. Obviously, it's a little bit of a risk-reward situation. But if I recommend to the board, I need to make sure that there's nothing going to be on our end from y'all or our team or anything like that, where we're the cause of it.
The, um, and so there is no right, in my mind, there is no right answer. You have risk either way. Like Greg mentioned, the Federal Reserve is supposed to have a meeting November first and second. They're expected to increase interest rates seventy-five basis points if Fed borrowing rates seventy-five basis points. But a lot of that is already built into the market because the market already anticipates that. You know, the market is pretty confident that that's going to happen. You know, like, we had a seventy-five basis point increase back in the middle of September. Everybody expected the seventy-five basis point increase. A lot of that was built in to the market ahead of time. But on that data, I think it's September twenty-first or around then, they did, the Federal Reserve did increase rates by the seventy-five basis points as expected. But then they, a little additional information, they, they expected or announced that they expected long-term rates to be even a little higher. And so because of that unexpected announcement, sort of additional tidbit of information, interest rates jumped within a day or two by thirty or forty basis points. So not the full seventy-five basis point, but again, you have no idea what the Federal Reserve is going to say on November second. You know, they could say inflation has gotten under control better than expected, and they're not going to increase rates as much, and rates could drop. Nobody, you know, the vast majority of people, experts, say that they're going to have that seventy-five basis point increase. But it's the market. You know, I don't have a crystal ball. So who knows what rates can do. Like Greg mentioned, if, if a forty, a forty basis point increase, like what we had in the middle of September, forty basis point increase results about two million dollars in total interest costs over the life of the deal. The difference between JP Morgan's, you know, three-seventy-five and the next lowest bidder is around three million dollars. So that's kind of the gamble, for lack of a better word, is a, a small, relatively small odds of having to pay a breakage fee. But if you do, it's a significant amount. You know, maybe eight-hundred thousand, maybe four-hundred thousand, maybe a little over a million.
Let me ask this question again, because I'm going back to this. Let's say nobody files anything, you know, and it's just our team and your team putting this together. What would cause a breakage fee at that? Somebody dropping the ball and not doing their job?
I think if, I think after validation, I would be confident that the deal's going to close within the window. If that's.
Well, my point is, like, I don't have a problem with recommending to the board if I know that y'all and our team are the two that are working on this and going to get the job done, and I could pick up the phone and call y'all and say, where are we on this? Is I don't need an outside factor to come in, you know, to, like, try something to get filed, that's one thing. But I don't want something else out of our control where I'm making this recommendation and that, that ends up happening.
And, and other part, for full disclosure, to make an informed decision, you know, we've never, I don't know that we've had an objection filed in a validation hearing in the last fifteen, twenty years in DeSoto County on any bonds, any certificates of participation, limited tax notes, nothing. We've never had an objection filed.
Because it would seem to be illegal.
Because it has to be a legal argument. And so objections being filed are really rare all over the state. We are working on a, and it's, you know, very similar certificate of participation financing for Simpson County School District, and there was an objection filed in that case. It was a political reason. They didn't want the high school built, but that has slowed things down. And we won't be able to close within the window that we need to close with the, with the purchaser. So it's possible. I, I don't think what has happened in Simpson County relates to here because it's a local issue. They tried to pass a bond issue. The bond issue didn't pass. The objectors were mad that the district's moving ahead with the construction of a consolidated high school anyway. And so that's why they've objected.
So to answer Ms. Russell's question, it is Cruz Associates, them and us are the only ones working on this to make our side happen, correct?
Yeah, but.
Yes.
Now, this deal is for ten years, right? Did you say eleven and a half?
But if we lock it in and then everything goes well, we stand to help DeSoto County over time. We're saving millions and billions of dollars.
That's correct.
All. Questions?
The other thing I'll mention is there are still some things that I just don't agree with them on other terms and provisions. You know, they want cross, um, cross default provisions. If you default on another unrelated debt, then you are in default on their debt. If another debt is accelerated because of a default, they get to accelerate your debt. You know, that's just not acceptable in my mind. But those are things that we still haven't worked out yet either. So what we're asking the board to do is authorize the superintendent to sign what's called a fixed rate agreement, which is the agreement that locks in that interest rate. But it does contain the, you know, the breakage fee provisions and all of that. But, but we are going to try to work with them over the next however many days it takes to work out the other, um, covenants, representations that they're wanting. Make sure we agree on those terms before we agree to the, um, to the term sheet and locking in the rate. Because otherwise, we, we lose our bargaining position.
Let me ask this question hypothetically. Let's just say it's happened. So let's say there's a breakage fee. It's a million dollars. But do we go back to the start as far as the interest rate? Or are we still going to save the district five million dollars over the next eleven years, even if there was a breakage fee?
Yep. What I would expect to happen is instead of paying the breakage fee, we renegotiate the interest rate. Because in the, in the banker's mind, and Greg, please feel free to disagree, but if that's, they're offsetting their loan to you with other investments. And so if, if your deal doesn't happen on time, that affects them financially in other places. They want to be made whole. I think there are ways of doing that besides just paying an upfront breakage fee, such as renegotiating the interest rate. I think that's still possible under the way we will set up the documents. We'll set a maximum interest rate, something like that. But it might require additional award action.
But today, we're just locking in the interest rate, and then there's some type of final document after that that would involve signing the breakage fee. Would that be another approval by the board later?
That's correct. So, uh, so this is simply authorizing you, it's not directing you to sign the, um, lock-in interest rate. If we just, if we can't agree with the bank, you don't have to sign it. But it authorized you to sign the fixed rate agreement. We would then have to come back at another board meeting. If we've agreed on the terms, that would be the November third meeting to approve all the documents.
So today, it's just locking in the interest rate, but the next one's going to be where the breakage fee will come in?
No, the, the locking in the interest rate is the breakage fee. So that's, that's the decision now. The, the next board meeting is November third, which is obviously after the November second Fed meeting. So that's the reason why we're here for a special meeting is if we feel like we need to lock in the interest rate, this is our chance to do it before November second. But we don't have documents ready in time. There's still some back and forth with the lender's counsel on that.
Go ahead.
So instead of having another special call, board meeting, this is authorizing you to be able to sign it?
I, I don't like the breakage fee, but at the same time, I feel like, you know, what we stand to gain or what we stand to save the county, uh, as, as we move forward in the future. Seems like that part outweighs the breakage fee. You said aye. I'm, I'm an ayes guy.
And can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and board, you understand, I'm not your, uh, bond attorney, I'm not your financial advisor, and your board attorney, and I, I, you know, obviously, I share some type of insurance questions that you do. Before you mentioned that there are other terms in the deal that give you some heartache and that you don't think are really good, that, that you should agree to. Are any of those subsequent discussions with, could they possibly resolve in the bank's saying, but we're not going to change any of these terms? And if you're going to just sign it, then we're just not going to go forward? Would that give them the right then to vote the breakage fee?
Yes, and that's why I would like to, you know, mention trying to work out those details before we sign anything, locking in the, the interest rate. Because we lose our, our leverage. Any bargaining position that we had is gone once we sign that fixed rate agreement.
Yeah. The one that, that what you're asking them to sign, is that correct?
Well, so, so Jim, the, the fixed rate agreement has kind of broad covenants and representations in there that we have gone back and forth on. Some of those are still in there. They haven't agreed to take out fully. But, but they're not a, a comprehensive, I guess, um, covenants and representations. Those are in, typically in a subsequent agreement. But what I prefer or suggest is that we, we iron out all of those details. You know, what all of those provisions and covenants are, that we iron those out before we sign anything.
That is authorization then, once y'all get those worked out. And Jim, you'd be involved in that too, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
You know, just to help.
Well, again, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not your, you know, financial advisor or the bond counsel. I like to do this by the board in terms of, um, there you go, just to understand the fact that this, as more appropriately stated, is a matter of risk, what is, what's, you know, what risk is the board willing to take in a situation like this? Because, um, I think board has accurately explained why JP Morgan insists on a, a breakage fee because of their potential loss if we don't go through that deal. So if they, in both the breakage fees, they're trying to be made whole. And it's a deal that's prepared, so the terms keep the deal from going through, and that was my concern. I just want to make sure the board understands all the terms. That's really what my role in all this is, just make sure board, you are clear of what you're giving yourself into.
Yes.
You're, you said aye earlier, low aye. We're not holding to it, but I mean, I'm an ayes guy. So like, what are the ayes if something like this comes, in your opinion, just to fall apart? What percentage chance that there, that we're sitting here saying, uh-oh, you know, now we're past the deadline?
If, if it wasn't for the Simpson County contested validation, I'm competent in, in saying that. But, um, you know, all it takes is one person to file an objection. That puts the brakes on. You know, the, the bank has agreed to let us have the closing date go all the way out to December thirtieth without really a significant change in pricing. And I'm not in the numbers yet, but most of the maturity, the, the interest rates are the same. Some slight differences in the first two years. I don't think it's a significant change in the interest rate by giving us a window to close all the way through December thirtieth.
Well, what about that? I mean, that sounds to me like that, would that lower the chances of the breakage fee?
Well, I mean, that, that helps. It just gives us a longer window.
It would just raise interest rate just a little bit.
I, I think it's just a couple of basis points, but, you know, again, those are, we're not signing anything right now, locking in anything right now. We're simply giving the superintendent the authority to do that this afternoon, tomorrow, next week, uh, when and if we get comfortable, um, with the terms of the deal. And, and so the, the, the closing window, that's something to be determined. That's not going to be locked in yet. This is.
Just giving him permission.
Just giving him permission.
But while we're in open session and we're all here talking, I mean, would the board prefer that? Because I, I'm going to have to make this decision. I mean, would we prefer to wait till, prefer to get that December thirtieth? Or kind of, you know, take the earlier one at the very lowest? That's my question, because I'm going to have to make a decision, and I want to make sure it's something in line with what y'all.
I think the gamble we're making is though this interest rate versus future interest rate, right?
That's the big decision. Uh, it's how long can you wait? Remember, our interest rate's going to go up over the next week. To me, if it's only going to cost two basis points, you know, which is not a significant amount, we can run the numbers to show you exactly how much that goes to a year. I think that might be a clear answer one way or the other. You can say, oh, well, for that much, we get an extra thirty days to close. That's, that's a number under.
You'd lower the risk of the breakage fee, that, would you say significantly lower the risk?
I asked the same question.
Well, because then even if something got filed, you would have time to get it filed.
So the way it works is with validation, yeah, if you file an objection, you have, they would have to file an objection, you know, prior to that deadline. A hearing date is then set, you know, a trial, actually, at least ten business days after that objection date. And then at that hearing, the judge could rule in our favor. After that ruling, I believe they only have twenty days to appeal to Mississippi Supreme Court. So it helps to work your way through all of those.
If we did go that route, we'd still save millions over, over the long term, even if we went with the December thirtieth date. We might not save as much money, but there'd be less risk.
You're, you're taking some risk. I mean, it's a bird in the hand.
Some risk, but you're not taking as much risk, is what you're saying. That's, and that's kind of what I'm asking our board members is over time. Because I mean, in a moment, if I make this rec, of course, I'm going to be recommending for y'all to give me the authority to do it. But if I, if y'all give me that recommendation, would y'all prefer that longer window is what I'm asking?
I would.
Sign our votes. It's just I'm asking, because I'm going to have to be the one to act, and I want to do it on board's behalf.
I would.
Well, y'all, y'all have an opinion, Chris. So y'all trust me, then I wouldn't wrong y'all.
What? Michelle?
I'm sorry. I would prefer to extend the closing date also.
You would prefer it? Okay.
Yes.
And that's the reason I was asking that question, because it lowers our risk. It might not be the very best interest rate, but the risk of the breakage fee is not as high. I just don't like, I don't like, I don't want us to gamble more than, you know, I think this, there's always a little bit of a gamble with anything with interest rates, because we can lock something in today and tomorrow, it's better. But at the same time, if, if this lowers the liability of the district, I agree. What, what y'all say? So that's what we'll look to do is that maybe it might not go with the, with the very. So that's what we'll look to do is maybe, it might not go with the, at the very lowest that we've got, but something that extends that window a little bit when we look at that part. That still, that, that interest rate still will be far better than what anybody else is offering.
And it's far better than what anybody else is offering. I'll also add the resolution, just so we're not tied to any one thing. It, it does authorize, if we can't reach agreeable terms with JP Morgan, you're authorized to negotiate with another lender.
I'll go ahead and make a recommendation. Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the resolution authorizing interest rate law for trust certificates.
I have a recommendation. I need a motion.
I make that motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. And against, say likewise. And against, motion passed. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
We need a second. Michelle, you second?
Yes.
Okay.
She made the motion there, please.
She made the motion.
Gerald made the motion. Michelle made the second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are now adjourned until November the third.
Thank you.